Good evening, everyone. At 7:01, I want to call the meeting to order. The Board of Selectmen has quorum, and I'd like to first call them to order. Diane, you want to call the Board of Finance to order?
Yes, this is Diane Del Rosso, Chair of the Board of Finance for Hebron, calling to order the Board of Finance majority quorum to order. Thank you.
Okay, first order, we should have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone would stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item up should be public comments. Donna, do we have public comments at this time?
There are none showing up at this time, but let me just give the direction for if there are any people who wish to make a public comment at this time, or there's another section at the end of the meeting. If you would just write your name and public comment in the chat box, and we'll recognize you for a three-minute public comment. So any, any public comment at this time, please just speak up. I guess you're all set, Gail.
Okay, thanks, Donna. All right, the first item on our agenda then will be the Hebron Board of Ed budget.
All right, good evening. Sorry, we had to get off mute there. I do think I have to call the Board of Education to order. I have myself, Chair of the Hebron Board of Ed, Amanda Veniziano, Vice Chair of the Hebron Board of Education. I believe I have Alex Crawford, as well as Diana Morales. So I just wanted to call the Board of Education to order as well.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mrs. Richmond. So I want to just say thank you so much for having us here. We're really looking forward to highlighting, you know, a lot of good work that we've done and that we, you know, want to continue doing. We feel like we have a fiscally responsible budget that allows us to maintain programming and even add a little bit in regard to our World Language Program, which we'll get to, but we're really looking forward to presenting this to you and answering any questions that you may have. Donna, if you wouldn't mind switching the slide for me. So the first slide is the power of the budget. What we mean by the power of the budget is really, you know, what the budget does for our kids. You know, it's the impact of sound educational funding for our children, which is also an impact on our economy, as you'll see. Another side of Dr. Baird will talk about enrollment increases. But really, the budget is a powerful tool to really, you know, stay our programming and offer a wonderful education to our kids. So some of the highlights here. The first one is the district reference groups, and we have 26 districts within our DIRG. And our assessment ranking, so in reading and writing, in 2021, in 2019, we were 18th in our DIRG in our scores for reading and writing. And this year, in 2021, we're in ninth. I mean, we really, I mean, we, it's amazing. In math, in 2019, we're ninth, and now we are fifth in our DIRG out of 26 districts, which is amazing, and it's accomplishment to our teachers and our good staff and Dr. Baird and just our students and their perseverance. We have a STEAM and Challenge Program. You know, ironically, we just came from the Invention Convention in our other room here at Gilliard Hill, which is why we're together, to celebrate all of our kids who really did these amazing inventions. We have several of them going on to the state Invention Convention. So that is something that we, we really love. It's a wonderful program. So we have, we are first place in kindergarten in the National Invention Convention. We are second place in grade four. And, and also in regards to STEAM and Challenge, we have a state future problem solvers essay contest, and we are first place in that. And so these are wonderful accomplishments of our kids. Our student enrollment, our total enrollment increase of 49 students, or 7.7% over the last two years, which is amazing. And our magnet school enrollment decrease of six students, which is 42.9% over two years, as they came back to Hebron Public School. If you could just, sorry, Donna, thank you.
The 2022-23 budget will continue the work that we have underway, outlined in the District Advancement Plan. Last year, we did a lot of work with that plan, and we're going to continue our partnership with Columbia University Teachers College, continue our curriculum development work in health, wellness, STEAM, and social studies. Also, we're going to continue our work in student intervention programs for academics and wellness. We're going to invest in social studies instructional materials, and also expands our World Language Program with Spanish to grades one and two, which we're really excited about.
So one of the biggest drivers for our budget is, of course, our enrollment. And so I wanted to really pull out some key grade levels of attention. Since this budget was originally put together, our enrollment has increased since the beginning of last year. So you see on the top, 684 students projected for next year. Well, since we put together the budget, we've actually grown to 697 students. So we, we already saw a net increase of 13 students in terms of like what we're expecting for next year. So, so our enrollment continues to grow. You see that in grade, first grade for next year, we've got 80 students currently, and next year, we're projected to have 111 students. Kindergarten students, students we know that are returning from homeschooling from this year. So we're going to need seven sections for first grade to be in compliance with our Board of Ed policy on class size. For kindergarten for next year, currently, we have 105. And for next year, we were originally projected for, with eight, for 87 students, which would be three shy from requiring us. Pretty confident that we are going to need those six sections, and our, and our registration numbers right now bearing to that. So right now, we have 72 students have registered for kindergarten for next year. Last year, at this time, we had 75 students registered for kindergarten. Last year, our projection was 100 students. We started the year with 104. So having 72 students already registered for next year definitely puts us on that same path to needing to maintain that sixth section of kindergarten for next year. At the bottom, you can see that we are projecting out how many sections we're going to need, how many classroom teachers we'll need over three years. That's one that's required under one of our Board of Ed policies to really forecast out classroom space and just whether or not we would need portable classrooms in future years, that, that sort of thing. So you can see that we're increasing the number of sections next year by two, to account for that growth in first grade. We're projecting the year out after that, that because of the age of the kids, the class sizes go up as the kids get older, that we likely would decrease based on current projections, two in 23, 24, and then in school year 24, 25, there'd be no changes in the number of sections that year. That's again, you know, if current projections bear out for us, but we've seen the trend for more students enrolling. Each month, we have two to four or five students enrolling, move from just students moving in, and our kindergarten numbers continue again to trend higher than what the original projection reports would, would indicate.
Thank you. So in regard to our world language expansion, Ms. Veniziano spoke about just a little bit ago. We have a two-year plan to expand world language for our kids. Currently, right now, we offer Spanish in only grades three through six, so at Hebron Elementary School. What we would like to do, starting next school year, is to offer Spanish starting in grade one, so we can bring it down to GHS, so grade one through six. And then in the following year, in 2023, 2024, we would like to offer Spanish for grades one through six, and sign language for grades five and six, and possibly French in grade six. You know, all that is contingent on, you know, budget and Board of Ed discussion, but that is, you know, we would like to see happen if at all possible. So for our expansion for next year, we would need a .4 FTE, so a little less than half-time teacher for, just to expand Spanish to grades one and two. And then, again, a .3 to .4 FTD the following year for sign language and French. So not even a 1.0 FTE total for both years, even less than that, just to offer this to our children.
We did have a few things that we were able to reduce the budget by. When the original budget was done, we had over-budgeted in custodial overtime, so we did have a reduction of $4,543 for that. We also were able to pre-purchase some furniture at a great deal this year that we can use for next year, so that we were able to take $10,292 out of the budget. And then the insurance rate, the renewal rate came in after the original budget was produced. So it was negative 4% is the rate, so saving us $74,366 for a total reduction there as $89,201.
So the bottom line, our overall budget increase for next year is a 3.26% increase. And Donna, if you can go to the next slide, I'll show you how that breaks out. So the major changes that we have for next year, the world language expansion that I talked about, which was a .4 FTE, and instruction materials to bring Spanish instruction to begin in grade one. We have those increases in grade one classrooms, so additional classroom teachers, the supplies and furniture to outfit those classrooms, and then operational costs. So that would be contractual increases, supplies, transportation, utilities, every, basically everything else. Thanks, thank you, Donna. So the world language expansion equates to a .25% increase over current year expenditures. The grade one expansion, the classroom teachers, 1.4, classroom teachers and supplies, 1.43% compared to this year. And then all other changes, contractual increases, 1.58, which is pretty similar to the last two years in terms of contractual obligations or increases in fuel costs, et cetera, bringing us to that total increase of 3.26%. And Donna, at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions for the Finance or for the Selectmen, if you might have.
Okay, folks, you must have some questions for Tom and the Board of Ed.
Gail, may I?
Most certainly.
I just have just an overall question. I'm wondering if, thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering, for either you, Tom, or Heather, if you could speak a little bit about the value of world languages. I think that would be helpful for the public to hear. You know, certainly where I work in a liberal arts environment, I understand it's key to prepare students and to prepare children for a global economy and a global world. But I think it would be helpful to hear why this plan is important to the district and what it means for our children.
Sure. So, you know, this is a goal that's outlined in our District Advancement Plan. And to, to your point, primarily for the betterment of our programming, to start our world language acquisition at an earlier age. We know from the research that students will acquire world language at a faster rate the earlier we start that instruction. This brings us more in line with our region eight peers. So it, it will help for our better continuity as we feed students up into the RAM program. We've also been working with Scott and his counterparts up at, up at RAM in terms of what the expansion would look like at Hebron now in a year or two. As enrollment declines at RAM, it's likely that FTE could then be shared between the districts so that we, you know, to maintain current staffing levels, but have them shared across the two schools. And that would really lead to a good integration in terms of students progress up to RAM. World language, we know, is a, is a skill that's needed in a global society. It is also certainly a financial implication when we think about our magnet school enrollment. So for students that are coming back from magnet schools, when we talk to them about, you know, why they thought out of magnet school to begin with, one of the first things they ask us about is our world language programs. What we have for world language options and what grades do they start? So for families looking for choice, world language is often a deciding factor for them. So for us to be able to offer similar world language programs to some of our surrounding magnet schools is a good thing in that perspective as well, because for students who are staying in district, it'll save us magnet school tuition dollars if we are not paying now.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Tom, could you break down for me the number of administrators that the Hebron Board of Ed has at this time? I think I've lost track of that in the last year or so.
For certified administrator positions, we've got myself, we've got our Special Ed Director, Dr. Brier. We have our two school principals, so Mrs. Uriano at Gilliard Hill School, and we have Mr. Larkin at Hebron Elementary School.
Okay, I guess what I've lost along the way is, what about the deans?
The dean of students are not administrator positions. They act in a similar capacity as an assistant principal might act in, but they are not certificated. Certification is, certification is not required, and those positions are within the teacher bargaining group. So those are teacher positions.
So they teach at all?
Well, they do push in and teach within the classroom in terms of our health curriculum and our social emotional curriculum, but they don't have a, they don't have a roster of students as like a second-grade teacher would. So they're working with all of the students throughout the school, both for, for those health lessons where they're pushing into the classroom and working with all children. And then they have, they're, they're implementing student support interventions, students who might have some challenging behaviors, or students who are having challenges within their attendance. They're working with those students in a similar way to our math specialists would work with students who are having difficulties in mathematics.
Those, those kind of interventions, students having difficulty with math or reading is, I'm accustomed to. So the deans have no classroom responsibilities?
That's correct.
Then, we've always, the last two years, it's been behavior interventionist. Do you still employ those, or has the deans taken over that?
The deans do that work.
So there's no behavior interventionist, just a school psychologist?
And a social worker.
Okay. And does anyone else have some questions for Dr. Baird in the board, or are we going on to? To stop and the RAM board? Yes, Diane?
So I have a few questions, if you don't mind.
Good, absolutely.
Superintendent Baird, my, all of my favorite Board of Ed members, thank you so much for being here and presenting. I do have a bunch of questions regarding numbers. So first, I would like to be reminded on what the balance of the Board of Ed Non-Lapsing Fund is. I can, I don't know.
Diane, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm getting a lot of feedback. If you're not speaking, could people please mute their computers or phones? Thank you.
Sorry, Diane. Could you hear the question?
No, do you mind repeating it?
That's fine, sorry. So back in 2020 and 2021, we started talking about a Board of Ed Non-Lapsing Fund. And we, we did authorize that, and I do believe that there was a transfer funds in 2021 from the June 30th, 2020 balance. Could you tell me what that balance is?
I believe it was $57,000. Caitlin is on the call. She might have a more exact figure, but I'd have to go back to the minutes from that Board of Finance meeting, or Elaine may have that information too. But I, it was in the $50,000 range. The current year, we're still waiting on the audit to be completed, so we have not requested funds from last year to be deposited yet. But I don't know if Elaine and Caitlin might have better figures.
I don't have those figures on me right now. I can spend some time looking, but probably want to circle back.
Okay, so I'm interested in understanding how much money is in the non-lapsing fund, which would have been from the June 30th, 2020. And then, of course, we're not, the current audit report is not complete for June 30th, 2021 yet. We're not finalized. Caitlin, do you have an estimate of what that, of the balance there of unexpended funds?
I'm, I'm looking into that right now. It's just not a figure that I have off the top of my head, unfortunately. But let, let me pull some things up, so you can find it.
So that's, so that's the second number. And the third number is, where are you in this year's budget? The budget that would end June 30th, 2022, as far as unexpended funds? And what you think you're going to end the year with?
So at this point, there's about $260,000 of unexpended funds, but there, I can tell you there is a plan for almost every penny of those funds.
Okay. All right. So I was just wondering what the other balance was, and so that's fine. Just as we consider, you know, often, you know, budgeting is budgeting, and we look to last year, or the budget that you're in now, in order to project into the future. And so I was looking to see if last year's budget is actually going to be accurate for us. So that's the $12,63,670. Elaine, sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm looking through my Board of Finance minute. I saw the balance was transferred to the non-lapsing, and it was around $57,000. And to my knowledge, there has been no expense to date against that, if that's what you were looking for.
Right, that is what I'm looking for. And then, of course.
There has been no expense against it. I don't have what the actual amount was. I'm sorry. I only brought Board of Finance meeting minutes back through November of 2021, and that happened before that timeframe. But there hasn't been any expenses presented against that non-lapsing fund.
Thank you. And do you happen to know if there are unexpended funds as of June 30th of 2021?
So I, I was just able to pull up some of those figures, then again, unaudited at this point, but we had a budget of $11,561,416, of which $11,386,993 was expended. So that leaves an uncommitted budget balance of $171,594.51.
Okay. And so that's the balance as of June 30th of 2021? And I believe the non-lapsing fund was set up for 2% of the budget? 2% of the budget, if left over at the end of the school year, with approval, could be transferred into the non-lapsing fund?
I believe that is correct.
Okay.
I want to just speak briefly. So to the, to the $171,000 surplus from last year, a lot of the driving factor of that was transportation savings, and the fact that we got significant COVID reimbursement funds that offset some expenses that we were allowed to apply for reimbursement. That, that's the driving, the driving factor to that savings.
Okay. And so if you were to ask for this to go into non-lapsing, would you have a plan within the budget to expand any of these funds?
We wouldn't design the budget to expand those funds. I think that the original intent was to have that money for unforeseen special education costs. I mean, if we haven't, if we have, we did not budget for any placeholders in our budget. So we have students that could need to have an outplacement, and it's $100,000 apiece. So if we had two students that needed to go into an outplacement next year that we didn't know about, which could be existing students, it could be new students who moved to town, you could blow through all of that non-lapsing in total. So that, that was really the, the idea beyond a non-lapse account, or if they were unforeseen, you know, capital needs. I know that would primarily be a responsibility to the town, but under certain thresholds, it could be a responsibility for us. So really, we would have approached building our budget differently had the non-lapse account not been established. I think that we would have budgeted for probably one additional outplacement for next year, just based on some considerations that we know of currently.
And how much would that have been for one additional?
It's going to be $100,000, we would budget.
Okay. Okay, that's it for me for now. Thank you. Gail, Mike, looks like you have some questions? And Mal?
Go ahead, Michael. You were first.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the questions from Diane and Caitlin or Superintendent Baird. I don't know which one is the appropriate one to answer, but did I understand from Caitlin's response to one of the questions that right now, there is approximately $260,000 in surplus funds from this year's budget, but you expect that all to be expended? And if that's correct, you don't expect a surplus this year?
That is correct.
The $260,000 are just funds that have not been encumbered yet. They've not been, purchase orders have not been put in for those expenses as of yet, but they, they are in categories that we expect to spend the funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Couple of questions here. I'm going through, or I went through your, your budget, and I see that you had made a statement earlier, Tom, that I think kids were coming back from the magnet schools. However, there's an increase to the magnet school budget? I mean, I, I know that prices can vary and such, but is there a reason why? Well, is there a reason why?
I'll let Caitlin answer that question.
Okay.
And I'm just pulling up that page of the bud, of the budget right now, so I can speak to it in some level of detail. But I, as I'm, as I'm pulling that page up, some of the factors that play into that are, as you said, Mal, like prices increase. So even if we did have a decrease in enrollment, we could, we could see increase by the, the rate at which we're paying for each tuition. And then in addition to that, some of our students, depending on which schools they attend or which grade levels they are in, don't, we don't pay tuition. So we don't pay tuition for our preschool students and students that attend one of our magnet schools in Hartford.
So is the increase an? So is the increase an anticipated? I mean, have you been told there are increases, or are you just planning that there will be increases?
No, we have, those are based on figures that we've received from, from the magnet schools at this point.
Um, another question back in the, oh, God, what is it, five, ten? Fifty one oh two transportation. Regular transportation. Is. Going up significantly. And I don't see the headers here. Expended, i- is the difference? What? You had mentioned you had saved money last year. It's not a difference in budget from year to year. Is it a difference? Is it a large difference because you didn't spend as much last year? I mean, I, I'm looking, and I see expended. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so if I could just jump in that. One of the buses we were able to cover with some COVID relief funds, so although we. You know, we, we had higher transportation costs than you, than you see in the expenditures from our general fund.
Okay, and that those funds are no longer available?
That is correct.
Okay, and I think the last question on budget. Dollars that I have is on special ed. Tuition and transportation. I see they're both up, tuition up. Pretty significantly, a couple hundred thousand, I think. And I'm just. Well, I, I have two questions. I'm, I'm assuming that's because you have more students out. I mean, you. Show that you spent thirty three. Are these errors right? I'm of it in nineteen twenty, and then the expended in eighteen ninety nine. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going backwards. Um, let me just quickly review that. One oh three. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, one oh eight, and then it's going up to one fifty four for tuition. And obviously, I know it's special ed and. I know there's very little you, you can say. I'm, I'm assuming, and I guess the question is, is this because you're anticipating, or you do? Or a combination of have more students outplays?
So if I could just. Answer that quickly, some of. Some of what you're seeing there is really an effort to streamline the way that we were utilizing some of our IDEA funds. So historically, the business office for Hebrew and Public Schools had. Taken just about every. Non salaried item and split funded it between the general fund and IDEA, which. Created a, a lot more work and. Just a lot, it took a lot more time to follow the paper trail on some of those expenditures. So what we did was take. All of tuition and move it to the general fund, but then all of, for example, the cost of our B C B A and. Into IDEA, so we didn't. Most of these projects are fairly level funded, but they've been, they've been placed into one funding stream or another, rather than splitting every single piece. Between two funding sources.
So would this increase? Unless your IDEA funds have been. Decreased by the same amount. I guess I'm, I'm unclear as to what you're saying. Have your IDEA funds been decreased?
No, no, we're, we're actually utilizing more IDEA funds. We're projected to utilize more IDEA funds in the upcoming year than. We have in any year that I, I'm able to look back into. So where you see. Where you see an increase of general fund expenditures here, you'll see a decrease in general fund expenditures for other special ed related items. Just because we didn't want to continue forever splitting the funding. For all of these individual items, it was. Creating twice the work.
Wait, your, your transportation is up.
You're doing another van for next year. We have another special ed.
I didn't hear the beginning of your.
We have other special ed van next year, so that's the, there is an increase in, in need for special ed transportation for next year.
Yeah, and that's fine, but is that something that was being funded by IDEA and has been moved into the general fund?
The van specific?
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how you can go up. Thirty five, forty thousand dollars in, in your tuition line. And what's been put in there? That is tuition that was previously paid out of IDEA funds. I'm not familiar with any tuition that can be paid out of IDEA funds, but that may have.
I know that we have an additional special ed van, and that accounts for the transportation increase.
Okay, okay, but then you've got the tuition that's also up. Why don't we, I mean, it, it looks like, it sounds like you, you need to do some digging. It doesn't sound like any, but either I'm not. Clear in what I'm saying. Or I'm not understanding what you're trying to tell me. So I don't know where we go. Last question then is, when you fund an outplacement. Do you fund a hundred percent of the cost of the outplacement?
Yes, and then we will, we would go after any excess cost that we would be eligible for.
Okay, so. Then you don't expect to. Assuming what you budget is what you end up with, you don't expect to receive any. Excess cost funds back from the state?
Yeah, we do not budget for excess cost funds coming back to us.
Those dollars come to the, to the town and they stay in the town?
No, typically, they do pass, typically, they do pass them forward. We don't budget for them, similar to the non lapsy account. We then use them for special ed related expenses, and I can tell you, since I've been here, we have needed additional pairs than we originally have budgeted for. Every year that I have been here, and we've had additional tuition expenses that we originally budgeted for as well. Our excess cost grant is diminished greatly. Mostly because the students that are currently outplaced are sharing transportation, so that transportation cost is split between the students. And so that, that factors greatly into our eligibility for, for the amount of excess cost we would be able to get. And so because our numbers are so small, any changes can really swing the budget one way or the other in, in this regard.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand that piece. The. To follow up on Michael's. On to, to Diane's. If, I mean, it sounds like you're pretty clear that the two hundred and whatever thousand dollars that's currently unencumbered. Is going to be spent by the end of the year. Is there a reason why that is currently not encumbered?
So I mean, off the top of my head, I can tell you of a seven thousand dollar repair that needs to happen to the. Hebron Elementary School fire panel. There is a five thousand dollar upgrade that's happening to. The speaker system in the single stall bathrooms at both schools. There is a ten thousand dollar furniture purchase that's coming. These are all. Things that we've been planning for and have quoted and are, you know, moving right along. So there are other things like, there's. You know, there, there are other. Like, for example, our. Our. Substitute teachers are not encumbered, so any cost that we would need to pay for any. Substitute teachers or substitute nurses from now through the end of the year wouldn't. So those are some things that would just. You know, eat down the budget pretty quickly that. That aren't, aren't covered at this point, but we know we will be spending.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just. Identified two other questions, and this is a follow up to the questions that Gail was asking about the dean of students. I'm looking at the. The budget proposal on page one, and if I'm reading this correctly, it. It looks like there was no expenditures for the dean of students in the. Two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty to twenty one years. And I'm wondering why that is so. And the second question is, with respect to the dean of students for Gilead. There's a projection of a. Twenty three thousand, seven hundred dollar decrease for next year's budget. Can you just explain why that's, that is so?
I'll take the first part of that, Mike. So in two thousand and twenty, the district embarked on a restructure of their administrative duties across the district. And that included eliminating a district level curriculum specialist. That's a teacher position, but doesn't have classroom duties similar to like a dean of students, so that position was eliminated. In favor of the two dean of student positions. We were realizing that there was more behavior support that was needed at both of the schools. We eliminated one district level position and created the two keyest positions in their place. So that's why you'll see that expenditure change. There was a decrease to central office. Staff, but it increased to school staff, and certainly needed, given the almost eight percent increase in, in student enrollment across both schools. I'll let Caitlin answer the second question about the specific twenty thousand dollar shift.
Yeah, that just has to do with some movement in those positions. We had a resignation, and the person that assumed the position this year is on a lower step.
Okay, thank you.
Diane?
Okay, thank you. I had sent an email, I think, earlier. A couple of weeks ago. I think the Board of Finance was interested in understanding. Overall, what the town has received and the Board of Ed had received for COVID relief funds, ARPA funds, or. Any other specialized pandemic funds. Since the pandemic started two years ago. And if there are any unexpended funds remaining from that. That you would. That would carry over into the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget.
We received that request and happy to supply that information. Caitlin was out for several weeks and has just been back this, this week. So I know that she's, she's going to be following up with that. In terms of remaining funds, the majority of the funds that we have remaining. Are in the form of a grant, a federal grant passed through by the State Department of Ed for fairly specific things, mostly related to academics. Meaning that we have left full pay for our program, so.
You're breaking up, Tom, I'm sorry.
Yep, sorry about that. So there, there, the majority of the remainder of our funds are to fund our tutoring program. Also have some funds to maintain our licensed practical nurse who works with our two school nurses. So we have been, that's a position we want to maintain. We went from two to one, but we want to maintain the one. Especially because it is very difficult to get a substitute nurse. So having the LPN helps provide some safety coverage, especially where we have some medically fragile students. We don't want to be without a school nurse on a given day. So we've been easing that position into the general fund, and so this year, I believe it's. Fifty percent split, or maybe that, that's the plan for next year, but I know we use those great dollars to help transition that position in, so it wouldn't be a shock to the budget.
Thank you. You, if you have access to our budget book on page one oh four and one oh five, it does show. A list of what we anticipate carrying over as far as current funds that we have. And then the general category and under which we plan to spend those funds for the upcoming year.
Thank you.
I would just like to add, if I could, I mean, no detail, but these are multi-year grants, and so they're. The budgets that we put in, or I shouldn't say we, the board, but Dr. Baird, Ms. O'Leary put in. Through the state EGMS system, Educational Grant Management System, is approved through the state of Connecticut, so there's not a lot of deviation. I mean, you can. You know, ask for, you know, the approved budget from the state to be revised. But, but of all of it's kind of planned out and approved by the state, so to move anything to any different category. You know, is a, a little bit difficult.
And I'll just, I, I know that this is slightly different, but in terms of our special education budget, our grants, the IDEA grant that we were speaking of earlier. You know, we've really leveraged that grant to its full capacity at this point. Within eight, almost eight percent increase enrollment of students primarily in the youngest grades, we are seeing emerging special education needs, and so that would be a bigger. Pressure on the local budget. What we've chosen to do is to really fully expend our federal special ed grants to pay for those expenses. The reason for that is, one, it lessens the local burden, at least in the short term. Two, when you're utilizing federal funds, it doesn't become a maintenance of effort issue. What that means is that once you start expending local funds, you're expected to maintain that level of funding. We could see that the, the level of special ed needs, the additional paraprofessionals that I spoke of. We may, as students are with us longer, may not need those positions. They may not be a long-term position. But if we utilize local funds, we could be potentially locking ourselves in to higher amounts of funding. But by utilizing the federal grant dollars, we are not necessarily locking ourselves into that level of funding. So we're being very careful and strategic in the use of those grant dollars, but I say that just to reiterate that. Our expenses are really driven by our increase in enrollment. And it could have been much higher if we hadn't utilized that grant funding. And it was just something we need to be mindful of, as we're moving into future years. And again, why the non lapsy account is so important, because it'll help provide some stabilization in those special education expenses moving forward.
Just to take Diane's question one step forward. Do you, meaning the schools, do the schools qualify for any of these big dollars that, that have. That the town is applying for? Now, Tom, I, I know, and, and I thank you for forwarding that information about the. The heating and ventilation grant. Is that part of that? Somebody help me with the name of the program.
American Rescue Plan?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is that those funds, and are there any other of those funds that you will be receiving?
So yes and no, so those are, that's the state set aside of those funds. So that, so we, how we apply for that is yet to be determined, and I think it has to go through the legislature before it's actually a thing. I think right now it's a concept. Of the governors at this point. But I, I, I do think that we're going to be in a good position to go after those, those kinds of funds, because we do have significant heating and cooling and ventilation needs. So we should go after every dollar that we can. We, besides the American Rescue Plan. We, besides the American Rescue Plan money, there are other smaller amounts in the area of special education, and they are very specific. They're broken out into three buckets, um, specific to special populations and how we are working with all of our students who fall under that category. And there's a plan that has been submitted for that and been approved at the state level. There's another set of money for recovery, for students who needed more significant recovery efforts. Most of that has been for specific tutoring for selected students. And then there's a very small pot of money, $650 to be exact, in terms of dyslexia programming. So there are other buckets of, of money that are more specific. The more general one is the American Rescue Plan. It was that three-to-four-year plan. That, again, for us, almost all of that money, probably two-thirds of that money, was set for the tutoring program, um, which is, you know, in process, including after-school enrichment activities that are, that are in process at Hebron Elementary School right now. So some really good things for kids.
Okay, so I, I think I just got my answer. If I were to ask you if you could give me a list of programs and amount of dollars, that would be an impossible task, since you don't know.
Well, I figured that's what Diane's question was, that getting at, in terms of the American Rescue Plan and the reimbursement. So yes, and there's also significant reporting we have to do for the federal government for all of those funds, including demographics of students served for all of that programming. So all of that's in process. And I can't promise how quickly we can get that to you.
No, I'm talking more of the future dollars.
Oh, there's no future dollars that I'm aware of beyond the money that we've already been told.
And, and have we notified our, our state reps that we've put in for, for instance, that ventilation grant? If it, if it is going to go to the legislature, it would be good that they knew.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't reached out to them yet, because it's not, not actually happening at this point, where it's, it's just been, been proposed.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Gail.
And we have some more questions. It looks like Peter wants to ask a question.
Yes, thank you. And, and I apologize in advance, because this will be the third or fourth time it's been asked, but, and I, and I thank you, obviously, for all the wonderful work that, that you do. So Dr. Baird and Heather, Amanda, the board, you do wonderful work. So I'm just hoping that you could provide, from a taxpayer perspective, because most folks listening, I mean, there's hundreds of line items, the acronyms that are used are confusing, the detail, the complexity of managing the school system is obviously apparent and difficult for most folks to follow. So from a taxpayer perspective, as, as they think about this budget, if you could sort of, I would look at it as a taxpayer and say, well, our expenditures for three straight years were about the same, 11.4, 11.1, 11.4. And so now, even though this year hasn't finished, but the expenditures you confirmed are going to get us around what the adopted budget was, why are we spending? In summary, like I'm walking in with you, Dr. Baird, to, to vote, why in summary are we spending the three main driving reasons why we're spending a million dollars more than we did historically spend? So that's a lot of money. So why? And so that's from a taxpayer perspective, you say, well, most of it is increasing teacher salary, most of it's benefits. Could you sort of simplify it in, in sort of a summary of almost like a, a couple of bullet points for, for the person who isn't going to be as engaged in the detail that you provided?
So it's really around contractual costs, like what you just mentioned. The cost of heating and cooling and transportation goes up every year. Um, and then the, of the, really, there's only other one big bullet, and that is student enrollment. Our student enrollment is up by almost 8%. I think it will be at about 8% by the time we finish this school year and enter the next over two years. That's a significant increase over that short amount of time, uh, which is a testament to, to our programming. We have a lot of students that are returning back from Magnet. We have a lot of families moving to town, citing the schools as a main reason for why they were moving to town. But, you know, for everything that comes, there's additional expense, and the main driver of that is the classroom teacher. So I think we'll be up three or four sections, three or four more classrooms than when I first arrived here two and a half years ago. That is what's driving this budget increase.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to try to help. Sometimes we get into the line items, and if someone's listening, it, it may be lost on them, so I appreciate providing more of a rudimentary summarization of the driving costs to, to help those that are listening or listening in, at the, on the recording later, to help them better understand. Thank you so much.
Before you guys leave, one, one thing that was talked about last year, and I know it was hindered by COVID tremendously, was looking for ways and working with departments and towns as to how to share services. Is there anything new on that? And maybe if you could, for, not so much for the board, because I think we all, we all heard it last year, but could you share with the public what you're currently doing? And what if, what if anything is new in terms of what you're doing as compared to budget season last year? Thank you.
Sure, I mean, I think the Health Insurance Consortium is where we're getting the most benefit in terms of collaboration across districts. And just this year, you know, 4%, reduction in our insurance renewal as of right now, that is a huge savings across both the town and the schools and for Ram. So I think Health Insurance Consortium is a big one. You know, we have cooperative agreements in terms of easel purchasing, our H-BAB contracts, so there's a lot of things like that. We work with Eastcon with, for our BCBA services. You know, I think that on the horizon, things that Andy and I have talked about is, in terms of facilities, um, you know, as, as the town is, is looking at a potential retirement looming in that area, facilities management is an area where we could probably collaborate with the town. We have a new director of facilities, but we're doing something different, where we share a director and share a maintainer, could result in some savings in terms of some of those maintainer repair type costs. I also think technology is another area. We provide technology services for AHM, and that's something where we could, in, in the future, if the town was so interested, we could look at the schools providing technology support to the town. That, that's something that we've talked about in the past.
And I do think, just speaking for the board, we do still have our shared service advisory group. The last meeting that we had, we had afterwards, when we were trying to find other dates, we had regional partners, and it's not just Boards of Ed, it is Boards of Ed, obviously, but it's also for selectmen, some towns, town managers, and here in, in Andover, Parks and Rec folks of different towns, just asked for just a pause, just because going into budget season, obviously Rams doing a superintendent search, um, you know, there was a changing of boards and chairs, and so it kind of got postponed. I do think, you know, you know, in regard to world language, you know, Marlboro, for a long time, their kids, you know, they have a world language program starting kindergarten. So when their students go to Ram, they have three more years of world language than our students. Andover is looking at adding, you know, having sign language put in, which is something we would like to do. So I do think there's areas there, um, you know, that we could share, you know, you know, for instance, the sign language, you know, I haven't had that conversation with them, so I put them out there. But I do think there's like things like that, that we could also look at in the future. And I do want to have that meeting, um, now that, you know, elections are done.
The last thing I'll just mention too is the bus contract. So the regional bus contract certainly has saved the town's money. Yeah, I think we have two more years on that contract, just speaking off the top. So that's something that I think will be important to maintain.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Diane.
Do I mute? I had to be the first that got caught, so thank you. Thanks, everyone. Just a, a point of context. So I'm looking at page 110 to follow up on the number of student enrollees. And of course, that's a big driver of our budget results. And so if we look at, um, the school year that ended in 2020, we had, um, case PK through six is 657 students. And then, um, at the end of June 2022, we're expected to have, is it 679? Or do you already have more than that?
We currently, right now, have 697 students in. And then we're responsible for two, for an additional 14 students in terms of tuition dollars.
Uh, so that's well over 700. So that's, um, it was, uh, 711, 711 students overall, when two years prior, uh, we had 657. Do I have that right?
Correct.
So, you know, we're, you know, it's not quite 50 students, say 45, pretty close to 45 additional students, just for point of context.
Reported, uh, in October, 685, six, something like that.
That sounds about right.
And you're up to 711?
Right now, in district, we have 697.
Oh, okay, all right.
14 out of district.
Okay.
And we also have, um, I mean, we had students this year who shifted to homeschooling. And we've had that over the last two years, and we do anticipate, we've reached out to those families. We know some have always been homeschooling and intend to stay homeschooling. We know many are planning on returning next year. Um, and the grade that, where that made, made or broke, um, the, the number of sections is where we focus most attention, and that's first grade. And, you know, that class will be at 111 students next year. That's our biggest group we've had moving through the system. But if all of our homeschool students returned, um, that'd be 19. I don't anticipate all 19, but, you know, just to put that in context, that's at least double what it usually would be.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Okay, folks, is there any more questions for Tom and the Hebron Board of Ed? Tom, Heather, Amanda, thank you so very much. Scott, I think that means that you're going to be able to, um, explain your budget to the folks now.
Great, well, thank you. Um, and again, thank you for inviting us this evening. It's good to see everybody. We, I am joined this evening with our business manager, Eva Gallup, and we have Mike Morris, the Chair of the Ram Board, Jessica Dapsis, Judy Benson-Clark, Mike Sharon, and Gabe Marx from the Board of Ed are with us. And I know there, there's a couple of callers, I'm not sure if any other Ram Board members have joined us since the beginning of the meeting. But again, thank you for inviting us this evening. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll walk you through our budget presentation. And I shared this with, I think, Don and Mal, and so I don't, you know, please feel free to share it with the entire board. Can everyone see that? Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Great, okay. So, um, so ju-just to, to stress that the Ram Board of Ed has not yet adopted the budget, so this is still a work in progress. The Ram Board typically adopts the budget at the, um, in, in early April, in time for the, um, to send it to referendum in May, and I have those dates in a few slides, so I'll certainly be reviewing that. I won't go through all the details, but I, I hope everyone understands that when we set out to build our budget, we're certainly basing it upon our mission, vision, and theories of action. Certainly are looking to engage our students in rigorous and challenging education and providing them with multiple pathways to both college and career readiness, which is certainly a emphasis that the board places on developing our programs. The commitments of the district that are part of our strategic plan are developing a fiscally efficient and accountable budgets that maximize our resources, providing welcoming, accepting, and well-maintained, accessible, and safe facilities, offering a globally competitive world-class education for all of our students, hiring and training high-quality professional staff, and engaging the community through active outreach and ongoing communication. The goals that you'll see reflected in this budget, we want to make sure that all of our students have access to actively participate in a variety of learning opportunities, develop our professional staff to promote a positive school climate, develop budgets that address the declining enrollment of the district, that are fiscally responsible and responsive to the needs of the schools, the towns, and the state, develop and implement strategies to enhance and further develop a culture of safety, acceptance, pride, support with our students, family, staff, and community members, and to enhance our facilities in order to support innovative and fully accessible teaching, learning, and extracurricular opportunities. As I mentioned earlier, this is still a budget that's somewhat in flux and that the, the board has not yet adopted it. I did an initial budget presentation on December 20th, and then did my formal proposed budget, presented my formal proposed budget to the board on January 24th. Since then, the board has had a number of budget workshops where they've received information from our, um, our district directors, our department coordinators. On February 28th, we held a public budget forum, and then the board met in their regular Board of Ed meeting that evening. On April 4th is when we will be presenting another public budget hearing, and then the board will adopt the budget on that evening, so they can send it to the budget referendum on May 3rd. The board does have their regular March board meeting coming up on March 21st, where they'll have another opportunity to look at the budget. We have already presented to the Marlboro Board of Finance back in February. This evening, we're presenting to Hebron. Tomorrow evening, we'll be presenting to the Andover Board of Finance, and the Marlboro Board of Finance has a, another invitation for us to present to them as well. Certainly, just to, to put on Ram in context to the other eight, or, or the, the total of eight regional secondary districts in the state, Ram has the lowest per pupil cost of all those districts. Obviously, they're coming from different DURGs and ranks in spending. I think what, you know, just from a comparison standpoint, this does indicate what a great investment the communities are, are getting from the reasonable spending amounts that the board is asking the towns for compared to the outstanding student achievement that I think we're all very proud of and enjoy. In terms of our enrollment projections, unfortunately, as Hebron L is seeing increases, we're not quite there yet. We will be seeing those and enjoying some increases down the road, but we got to wait for those early grades to, to make it through the system before they hit us. We use the New England School Development Council, or NESDEC, as some of you may have heard of, to use for our predictive measuring. We are anticipating that over the next five years or so, we'll, we will be seeing approximately 161 fewer students in the district. Looking ahead to next year, the 22, 23 school year, we're anticipating a, a fairly limited number of, of decreases in students. We'll see five fewer at the middle school and 21 fewer at the high school. I, I do want to point out that we, we are also seeing an increase in some students returning from technical, VoAG, and Magnet schools. Since the beginning of this year, we think, we've seen 13 students return to Ram during the school year. The NESDEC projections, looking forward, you can see that the middle school is anticipating beyond next year, three additional years of, of, of enrollment decreases. But you can see it's a, you know, the But you can see it's, um, you know, they'll see in, into twenty-three, twenty-four, a decrease of twenty, then a decrease of thirteen. And then in twenty-five, twenty-six, they're only projected to see a decrease of one, and then in twenty-six, twenty-seven, the middle school starts building back up again. So their, um, enrollment will be increasing by anywhere from twenty-two to, to forty-eight students, um, for the next few years. At the high school level, we're anticipating a, um, decreasing enrollment of anywhere from fifteen to forty-seven students, for an average of about thirty students a year over the next five years, before we start seeing, um, a recovery in the RAM enrollment in, uh, two thousand twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And I, you know, to, to demonstrate as well that we certainly try to be responsible partners, um, with the three towns. We have reduced teaching positions, um, as our enrollment has been decreasing. Um, since two thousand eighteen, we've decreased, um, our teaching roles by sixteen, um, positions in response to, um, our decreasing enrollment over those years. Some of the proposed changes that this budget includes, um, that are proposals, you know, in, in terms of my proposed budget, some of these positions, um, were funded by, um, the ESSER grants initially, and I'm looking for, um, to extend them one more year and include them in our own operating budget. And then we would anticipate that these positions would, um, would no longer be budgeted beyond that. Um, with the exception of our, our PE health teachers, um, we did add a point four FTE, so that's a little less than half of a halftime teacher. And the reason for this is, we saw a shift in student interest into the, um, wellness area, which includes PE and health. Also saw a increase in the graduation requirements. This was a state-required increase in graduation requirements that requires our students to take additional PE and health courses prior to graduation. And we had, um, my, my proposal is to move this from grant funding into the operating budget. Um, that increase would be dependent upon further enrollment changes, um, moving down the road. The next three positions, um, and they're not full-time positions. So the next one is seven periods of academic labs. This is not seven individuals or seven full-time positions. These are simply seven, um, stipends that allow, uh, for seven periods for a teacher to provide academic labs at the middle school. And our academic labs are similar to study halls, but they're much smaller in size, and they allow the teacher to connect with student parents and provide a much, um, higher degree of support for those students. I'm asking for one additional period at the high school. Um, the reason for these, the reason why we added those using the ESSER grants was that certainly during the pandemic, we saw many, many more students struggling and in need of more intensive assistance to support them in their academics. We anticipate that, um, some students will continue to have that need going into next year. I'm confident that moving beyond that, um, those needs won't be so great. The two study hall monitors at the high school, um, provide a similar role in that when we assign teachers to academic labs, they're no longer available to do other duties, and the most typical duty that a stu- a teacher would do would be monitor study halls. So the additional study hall monitors will allow more of our teachers to provide, um, that academic lab support. The three paraprofessionals at the high school are associated with special ed, um, students and special ed needs. So we, we know that we'll need an additional three paraprofessional to meet the needs of, um, our incoming special ed students. The, um, nurse's assistant at the high school, we, um, we have had a point six-seven. So again, it's a little more than halftime nurse's assistant at the high school. Um, we had actually planned to eliminate that position for this current school year. Um, but as you can imagine, the nurses' offices have become, um, really a, a hub of activity, certainly during COVID. Um, and we felt it, it was a, a, we really needed that position back in that the nurse's office to manage the numbers of students coming through there. We covered that through a grant, um, this year, and I'm proposing that we fund it one more year through the operating budget. Um, again, in anticipation that next year, we still may have, um, an enhanced need for, um, assistance in the nurse's office to manage the students that, um, will be going through there. The school counseling team leader stipend, this is, um, a, a, not a large stipend that, um, funds the school counseling program. This is just a, um, a small stipend that allows one of our middle school, um, counselors, school counselors to play a leadership, leadership role within the, um, team structure in the middle school, and to help organize and structure the support that our school counselors provide to our middle school students. At the high school, we already have a structure where our school counseling department coordinators are housed in the high school, so that's not a need that they have. Not having that leadership role in the middle school, we felt it was important to have that to help them structure, again, their services for our students. In terms of, um, some reductions to the budget, um, we have had for a couple of years a halftime district technology services technician, and we simply have not been able to fill that position. As you can, um, sure imagine, um, it's difficult to find most positions and to fill many of our, our vacant positions. We simply were not able to fill this position, and, um, we have been able, in the meantime, through the use of our IT director, we have, we do have a full-time district, um, services technician, and one of our teachers, we've been able to free up, um, for a couple of periods each day to provide some support. And we, we, we're confident that we can provide the level of services necessary without that position. The other reduction, a high sc- um, high school English teacher, um, I indicating there that this is grant-funded. This is one of those positions that, um, we, for this school year, funded through one of the ESSER grants. And again, because of our, um, enrollment shifts, we no longer need this position, so we are eliminating it. Again, it's not a reduction in the operating budget, since this is grant-funded, but I did want to point out that, um, you know, we're, we, we are reducing, um, some of those positions when they're, they're no longer needed. In terms of some of the, the driving factors in the budget, um, in, in some of our key areas that, that tend to be, um, some of the more expensive areas, in terms of our IT budget driving factors, under the software packages, you can see that there are a number of software packages ranging from a thousand dollars to, to nine thousand dollars, that are either going to enhance our ability to, um, provide instruction in the classroom. So, eh, example, the smart notes is used by the, um, math department to support, um, some of their smart tool instruction. Whereas JAMF is a web-based centralized platform for managing our Apple products in our, primarily in our arts areas. The Duo MFA is a firewall add-on, um, that we're bring, we'd like to bring on. Schoology is a instructional, um, software package that allows teachers to organize their instruction in their classes. I'm sure you can imagine going to school today is very different than it was even a few years ago, and rather than working with, um, kind of a paper world, where we're definitely working in an online world, even though our students are present and in the classrooms. And so Schoology is one of those platforms that, um, supports instruction. And Google Enterprise also is used extensively through the school, and so this will, um, will assist teachers in using that. In terms of hardware, um, RAM has, you know, we're a one-to-one school with laptops, and certainly, there's a, a great deal of technology that needs to be updated occasionally. Every classroom, um, when the building, when we moved into the building in two thousand and three, um, was, um, had a smartboard and a projector, and those smartboards from two thousand and three, many of them are failing and need to be replaced with not new smartboards and projectors, but, um, much more cost-effective LCD panels. And our leasing program tended to be variable. It would go up, it would go down each year depending on what we're buying. And, um, about five years ago, RAM, um, embarked on a, um, attempt to level our, our leasing for technology. Um, and so that at each year would be a sixty thousand dollar amount, which would cover all of our technology needs, and it wouldn't go up from there. And so this is the last year of that project, so, um, we're replacing a lease amount of forty thousand dollars from this current year, um, to a sixty thousand lease. And if you look at our budget book, you can see how then that flattens out each of our lease payments, um, moving forward into the future. Some of the, um, technology purchases we'll need to make this year is replacing the seventh and tenth grade student Chromebooks, um, and replacing a number of the interactive, um, LCD panels within our classrooms. In terms of our special education drivers, we have, um, an, uh, an increase in our magnet school tuition for some of, um, our special ed students. The second bullet lists the, um, specific students that we are anticipating either having, significant, eh, um, cost changes in their placements, and/or students coming into us into the seventh grade who are already attending, um, out-of-placement programs, or, in the last bullet, students that are transitioning, um, to postgraduate transition programs, which, which brings another cost structure to it. We have had a slight increase in our assessment supplies. We just simply have more students in need of services, um, which we believe is, is related to the pandemic. So we find that we're, we are doing an increased number of assessments, um, to look at student needs. In terms of our facilities driving factors, um, we have an HVAC repair and maintenance software program update, that we need to, um, purchase. We're anticipating for our ever-source delivery fee for electricity, an increase of ninety-five thousand dollars. We have, um, some individual equipment purchases we need to make, a washer and dryer for the middle school PE department, an acid flame cabinet for the high school science department, a new soundboard for the auditorium, and, um, three outdoor AED enclosures for athletics. We have a number of AED boxes within the building. Our AEDs for the fields right now really are not accessible to the general public, and we know that we have, um, a lot of use of our fields outside of the scope of RAM employees. And so, um, we'd like to install AED enclosures that would make those available, um, not just to the, to the RAM staff. For our natural gas supply, we have an increase of five thousand dollars, and the security repair and maintenance addition is for adding a remote door access to the English math stairwell. Um, if you can imagine, um, coming, walking through the, um, entrance way to the, the main entrance into the high school, um, right adjacent to the outside of the building next to the library, there's a doorway that goes into the English pod that does not have a remote door access. And with so many of our classes being held outside now, and, um, teachers taking kids out, um, you know, we want to make sure that nobody is tempted to prop open a door. And, um, so for security purposes, we're adding a, a fob there, so that teachers will be able to, um, get in through that, um, entrance way. In terms of our, our capital budget proposal, I, I, I imagine most everybody knows that RAM is bifurcated, our operating budget and our capital improvement budget. It has been a goal of, of the Ram Board to, very much like we did with leasing, to, um, find kind of that sweet spot for the capital improvement, um, budget. And the, the goal was, was to come up to about the five hundred thousand dollar range, which would then remain static moving forward. So I'm hopeful that, um, by getting to this amount, that moving forward, you're not going to see, um, any sharp increases to the capital, budget proposals, but that it'll stay at a static, um, level. What we're proposing for here is the vinyl flooring in our kitchen that serves both of our schools is peeling up and has really become, um, both a health and safety risk. Right below that, the walk-in coolers and freezers, we have a number of those in the kitchen area that also need to be replaced. The seams are breaking. Um, they also are becoming health and safety issue. Our health and safety inspections are flawless, with the exception of these two areas. These are the only areas that we get, um, marked down, um, points on. So those are areas that, that really need to be replaced. The re-caucking of the joints, um, and the, along the foundation and windows for both buildings, um, is overdue at this point. You'll notice that the high school actually comes in at a lower amount than the middle school, about ten thousand dollars cheaper than what it will cost to do this at the middle school. The reason for that is the middle school still has some of the original caulking from when the building was first constructed in nineteen eighty-three. And so there's, there's some concern that there may be some PCBs in that caulking, and so that, um, there are going to be some mitigation requirements for that job that aren't going to be present at the high school. The retention pond, um, this is the retention pond that is just below the middle school baseball field. It was designed to be a catch basin for water coming off of the high school athletic fields and the parking lots. There's a, a spillway that prevents silt from going into Jeremy Brook, which runs right behind this. Um, the retention pond is, is at the point of its life where it needs to be cleaned out, and the spillway itself has shifted, so it's no longer, um, positioned to be able to adequately remove the silt, um, before it goes into the pond, so, so that needs to be attended to. Um, unfortunately, every year, we, we put in a, an amount for sidewalk and curbing repairs around campus. Um, forty thousand, sounds like a lot of money, but I, sorry to say, it doesn't go very far. It's about what we've been putting in each year, um, for a number of years, and we still have some areas that, um, are definitely in need of repair. So that brings the, the capital budget to a total of five hundred and four thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. In terms of, of, of the budget overview, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go into some of these areas in much more detail in just a minute. Um, but just to give you kind of an, a, overall concept, the reason why some of these are in red is these, um, represent a modification since, um, the last budget book, um, from, um, later, late in February, and, uh, we updated the budget book for March first, based upon, um, some savings and additions from our last board meeting. Um, so, you know, the, the big driver here, as you can see, is, is salaries. At the, on the first line, at, at the one hundreds, I think, you know, everybody's aware too, if you go down to the second to last line, the eight hundred line, that reflects the, um, the decrease in the principal and interest payments for the RAM building project. Um, we're entering the last, um, seven years or so of that project. So for next year, we will see a decrease of, um, one point four million in the principal and interest for that program. For the, going back up to the salaries, we did a number of things this year that, that we attempted to, well, our, our goal was to coordinate with the decrease in the, um, principal and interest, our goal being to come in at a negative budget, while at the same time being able to, um, support some expenditures that we knew we, we had to attend to. Under the salaries, a couple of the, um, really important areas that we needed to attend to is the fact that our teachers and our non-certified staff, um, have historically been paid significantly lower than comparable districts, not just Hebron and Marlboro, um, but surrounding districts as well. And with our, our And with our our teacher contract, one of the, just to kind of give you an indication, I think, of of the challenge of working with some of these contracts. The settlement for the RAM teachers actually included no percentage increase to our salary schedule. So if if you're a teacher in steps one through 12, rather than seeing any of those salary steps increased by a given percentage, instead, each teacher is guaranteed moving up a step. And for RAM, that is unusual. One of the challenges we have at RAM compared to, say, Marlboro and Hebron is that Marlboro and Hebron have significant number of staff members at the top of the salary scale. So there's not a significant cost for staff members moving up a step. Whereas in at RAM, we have so many younger staff members that it's a much more expensive proposition for staff members to move a step each year. So rather than, again, adding a percentage increase to each of the steps, with the exception of the top step receives a one and a half percent increase for the next three years, all we did here was move our our teachers up to the next step. And so if you looked at the RAM salary schedule in 2023, you'll notice that for that that year and the next two years, it remains identical with the exception of that top step. For our non-certified employees, they too were wealthfully underpaid and, you know, we're actually struggling with the challenge of of making sure that everybody was was above minimum wage. One of the things that we coordinated with with this, the 2223 budget year is each year, there is a percentage increase. So for this year, they get a 2% increase. Next year, they get a 2% increase. And then the third year, they have a two and a half percent increase. But what we did for the first two years of of the non-cert budget is we added an hourly differential so that the current school year, there's a 50 cent an hour differential for each non-certified employee. And then for next year, there's a dollar increase differential. So so that bumped up the salary cost for that one year in particular. And again, that's why we have it coordinated with the decrease in the principal and interest. I'm gonna go to the next slide because I'll go through the others in a little more detail. So for our purchase services, which includes transportation, which is getting our students back and forth to school each day, our special ed, our VoAG and our athletic transportation, our printing and biting, our electric repair and maintenance. And what previously we had three custodial full-time temps in our budget, we were able to decrease this budget. And I think one of the more significant decreases came from our three custodial temps. We found that during the pandemic with so many custodians out at any one given time, we really needed and relied on having three full-time custodial temp positions that we could fall back on when we needed to make sure that we had replacements for custodians. We're eliminating that from from this, from the 2223 budget, being that where we've moved beyond the pandemic at this point in having that need that we don't have the we don't have the absentee that that we were seeing during the last couple of years. So we did increase the number of custodians by one, but then also cut three of those full-time custodial temps. In our tuition, and this is mostly special ed and our our VoAG tuition, we're able to decrease our spending next year by $367,000. For supplies, this is actually an increase, unfortunately. And as I mentioned earlier, electricity, we're anticipating significant increases in electricity, diesel fuel. The other area is our career and technical education supplies. So this is the department that focuses on manufacturing, on on some some woodworking, engineering. And for the last couple of years, there hasn't been a lot of that hands-on activity. And so moving into next year, there is some additional supplies more than they might typically have purchased that we'll need to make sure that we have on hand so that we can continue to run our our full hands-on program in that area. In terms of property acquisition, this would be equipment outside of the capital budget for our academic areas, our IT equipment, furniture purchasing, we've reduced and eliminated much of that. So we're able to decrease moving ahead into next year for that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the principal and interest for reduction doing to the bond. What's going to happen is that the the next couple of years will remain static at a little bit above a million dollars. And then three years from now, there'll be another decrease of 600,000. And then there'll be three years where the principal and interest payments will be 400,000. And then the bond gets retired. I think it's 2027. At the, as I said, the budget is still in process. And at our February 28th board meeting, the board added an additional family consumer science teacher, which would allow us to bring back our foods and early childhood programming. The $80,608 covers the cost of a teacher with all the benefits going along with it. We use master's six year as our planning. With a program like this, have a lot of, well, there there really aren't anyone coming out of the, any of the certification programs at this point. You have to anticipate finding somebody who's a bit higher up on the salary scale and then supplies and equipment for that program. The board did do some purchasing with our current funds to remove some items from the both the operating and the capital budget. So we have a steamer and a portable refrigerator replacement for the kitchen. The steamer is one of those those large items that that has just failed on us and is critical to a modern day school lunch program, really can't do without. So we really need to get to replace that. And our portable refrigerator units are original to the building in 2003. And our goal is to replace at least one a year as they're starting to fail as well. But we're going to pre-purchase those one-time purchases out of money in this year's budget to reduce the operating budget by $40,900. And then in the capital budget, we had a inspection of our fire dampers and we had 24 fire damper actuators that failed. They were originally in the capital budget and we're going to purchase those now and have that work done. So we're able to remove that from the capital budget. So in terms of of looking at the the budget as a whole, the, before we look at any anticipated revenue, we're looking at a decrease of a little over $456,000. So it's a decrease budget of 1.47 cents. When we look at our anticipated revenues, you know, we're we're anticipating unfortunately, not quite as much excess cost as we had originally hoped. And so that balances the 1.47 and ends up with a, once you pay those into consideration, a decrease of 1.35%. I have the town levies down there, but I'm gonna pull those out in more detail in just a few more slides. And then our capital improvement budget. As I said, last year, we budgeted 290 or this year for this current year, $299,500. I'm proposing the 504,000. So that's an increase of 68.49%. And if you put it all together, that equates to an overall decrease of negative 0.67% compared to last year's budget. And in terms of the proposed town levies for Hebron, for our operating budget, the operating budget, the levy would be $71,796 less than what we paid last year. But as you saw, there is an increase in the capital improvement budget. So for Hebron, that would be $97,953. When you look at both budgets together, that equates to for Hebron of an increase of $26,157. And again, the board still needs to review. You know, the the budget's not shut down yet, but we do know that there is $46,230 in surplus from 2020, 21 school year. That's going back to the three towns. And so Hebron will be receiving $22,157. To go back to to some additional capital budget options, I think one of the things that you may have noticed in my capital proposal, those are all critical items that are all focused in and around the building. There were no athletic facilities recommendations in our capital budget. What we're looking at in terms of our available capital money, and this gets a little complicated, so I wanted to break each of these these out, is you've got my proposed capital budget, 504,000. The RAM board, right now as we speak, has $229,235 in in total capital fund balance. 108,000 of that is in the capital improvement plan and 120 in the capital non-recurring balance. These are monies that either reflect projects that were completed under budget. And so there is money remaining in the capital fund. Much of that, though, are represents projects that were originally planned and postponed as the board pursued the turf field project. And obviously, not being successful, now we need to come back and ask the question, you know, which of those field repair projects does the board need to to reconsider? The 2% carryover from 2020, 21 has been audited. So that leaves the board with $612,385 within that 2% carryover. The $48,000 I referenced in the previous slide would be money above and beyond that. And the options that I'm I'm suggesting to the board in terms of using our capital budget and our existing capital funds, you know, the board could choose to fund some of the capital projects in the in the 2223 proposed budget in order to reduce the capital budgets. They could use some of that existing capital funds to do that. They could fund additional capital projects that are not included in my proposed budget. We certainly have a long list of of items. And and looking ahead, as I'll get to in just a minute, we have some fairly sizable projects within the next five, seven years or so that the board will need to consider, such as the roof replacement, boiler replacement, chiller replacement. They could also use some of that money to fund some of the necessary athletic field repairs. In terms of the audited surplus funds, and and it says amount to be finalized in February, that has been finalized. They could use that to fund the necessary athletic field repairs that still exist since we we haven't done any of that work on the on the fields. They could create a capital non-recurring line item to offset future bindings for like the items that I just mentioned, the roof, the boiler, the chiller replacements. And that money would also be available to return to the three towns if they chose. It's important to note that the surplus funds really are only available for the board to use for capital projects or returning that money to the three towns. That that that's not money that that obviously we're allowed to use for any type of operating budget items. And as I kind of bring this to a close, just here's a overview of the budget history and the combined percentage increases over the last five years, and then the proposed in decrease of 0.67% moving into 22 and 23. And with that, I'm happy to open it up for questions.
Well, folks, we had a lot to digest there. Thank you, Scott. Any questions from anyone? Well, okay, as it's almost nine, I guess everyone says I'm going to digest all that and be sending emails to Scott with their questions.
Yeah, I think Diane has a question.
Oh, okay, Diane.
Sorry, I just didn't want to be the first one.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, Scott. Thank you. Thank you for present the presentation. Thanks for the board for being here. You talked about the audited surplus funds. So this is always my favorite topic. Yeah. I, you know, asked a lot of questions of the Hebron Board about of these amounts as well. And so you mentioned that they can be used either on capital projects or return to the three towns. As capital projects come up and the board makes a determination of perhaps what they want to spend that money on, does that have to go to the towns to be voted on?
No, the board, the board can determine, you know, they they vote within the RAM board for those projects. So if it's coming out of their capital fund, the surplus, the board has the ability to decide again what to do with them. So for, you know, example, last year, we returned all of the surplus to the three towns. I think it was a little over 700,000. So the the board is able to manage those expenditures.
Okay, so potentially we're talking about, I think there was a slide that you showed where there was the 612,000 audited surplus plus approximately $230,000 of capital funds from other unexpended projects. I believe. And then there, this year's budget, we're adding 504. And the 504 was for very specific topics where very specific items.
Correct.
And so potentially, we know about the $504,000 worth of projects, but there's over $800,000 remaining in the capital funds that don't have plans that the town, the towns would vote on. Is that correct?
Yes, I think I understand you correctly.
Okay, so you're talking, you know, it's 843,000 approximately?
Correct, right.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
If I can just interject, I'm sorry, this is Mike Morris, chairman of the board. I just want to just clarify one point on that. The some portion of that isn't necessarily no plan to it. It was they were postponed plans as a result of the fact that we were working towards the the potential turf field. So just to be really specific.
Okay, so that could be the $230,000 approximately?
That's correct, right.
Okay. And then potentially the 600,000, 612,000 might be used for other improvements with the field.
Correct, right.
That are needed, the track and that kind of thing.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we we actually in the in another decision, the board or motion the board approved at the last meeting was to not spend any of that money yet, but to permit me to go out to bid to get some firms to come in and give us a very specific example of what is it that really needs to get done on these fields? And, you know, and the track as well, you know, the track is over, well, twenty years now, so we know that it it has reached its its end of life. However, you know, to replace a track can cost anywhere from, you know, a hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. It's it's crazy. So, you know, we felt it was in the best interest of the community to actually, you know, hire somebody to come in, take a look at it and let us know exactly what the shape of it is. So is it a matter of just simply replacing with the exact same material or are we at a point where we would need to do, you know, use a different type of material? And that's the material that really kind of determines the cost of those. And then for the fields to really help us get a definitive handle on, you know, the fact we're not moving towards a turf field, what are the drainage issues and what exactly needs to be done? That's going to be the most cost effective way to to move forward on those.
Thank you for that. And are is the company that we're hiring independent of sales?
We haven't hired anyone, so we're, you know, we we actually work very, very closely still with Rich Clarko.
Yep.
Who's a consultant for the district. And so we'll be putting out the bid, the bid in a probably in a couple of weeks. And so we haven't, we haven't settled on anyone at this point, so.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Appreciate that.
Mal, you had some questions?
Yeah, a couple. Scott, as as former school administrator and no longer one, I certainly wouldn't get involved in my opinion of what you should or shouldn't be offering. That's no longer my my realm of of authority or or even knowledge. But but something between what you offer and the finances have caught my eye or mind. And now we've put in another program, which I understand, you know, might be very, very helpful to, you know, a group of students. And obviously, that's what you're you're there for. My question, concern, whatever you want to call it, is so as I see it, and please, anyone, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a decreasing number of students. We have an increase in the number of credits for graduation, excuse me, graduation requirements. The the combination, it seems to me, is going to lower the total number of spots that can be taken up by electives. So by adding more electives, are we, number one, going to be able to fill them? Number two, are we going to end up with some electives that are small, so small that it's not fiscally prudent to even run those? And along with that, I know, hey, I spent years in private industry too. And, you know, we'd find a program that wasn't working and we'd get rid of it. And I'm just wondering if Ram staff and administration has looked at the offerings and and the numbers of students that are signing up? And are there programs, courses, whatever you want to call them there, where maybe if we're going to add this food service program, there's a program that doesn't have the draw that this might have? And could those be removed? And then the final piece of that is, my understanding is you haven't been able to find a certified person and family in consumer science education hasn't been in the universities probably for ten to fifteen years now. So your pool is getting smaller and smaller. So if you decide to offer this and you can't you can't fill this position, what happens to the kids then? And I'll leave it.
But you're certainly, I'm giving away your your vast knowledge of education, Mal. So you're you're short selling yourself when you say that you've been out for quite a while. You know, I think one of the things that the board did, which I think was very smart in in adding this back in, was they've asked us to reach out to our student body and families and see what, you know, what what is the actual interest in students requesting the program and what does that look like in the big picture as 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 you described? So, you know, I will have an opportunity to discuss with the board those results and see where we fall. You know, obviously, if it's a really well attended program and it it meets all those needs, then, you know, we know that it's it's viable. If it's if it's not, then we'll have that discussion as well. You know, I do think that, and I know the Ram Board knows as well, is that, you know, as they move forward with the new superintendent, this is probably going to be, you know, one of the most critical discussions that they have as a group with themselves and the community in terms of what does Ram look like moving forward? Because it's 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 not a simple task of of just looking at enrollment decreases when and being a comprehensive high school. You know, obviously, we want to make sure that we hold on to the vast majority, if not all of our our programs, because then you have the challenge that there does come a time when we start to build our enrollment back up. And and I think any of you know that once you remove something, it's really, really hard to get it back, even if you have more kids coming in the building. So, you know, this is this is certainly going to be a challenge. But, you know, that I think the board in in their decision making the other night added some kind of fail safe to this as well, so that prior to shutting down the budget, we'll have a more thorough understanding of what the interest is and and how it impacts other areas.
If I could just jump in there to, you know, just provide the fact that, Mal, appreciate the question and to to, you know, give you full confidence, pretty much almost word for word, what you, you know, voiced to us. Scott was very clear to the board in communicating that those were definitely concerns that we need to incorporate into our decision. So, you know, please feel feel very confident that Scott, you know, both from the big picture and long term perspective is giving us that that advice. But also, I think, you know, he mentioned the fact that we added in some decision making factors into this, and one of them was to go out and gather some data. And so just to kind of give you a feel, I mean, the feedback that we got, both from the kind of the counseling group, as well as some from some student survey, was you know, an interest of as many as potentially a hundred and eighty students, which is a pretty significant portion of our body. I think to your point about how do we, you know, continue to maintain the number of electives that we offer and then make sure that we fill them appropriately, I think that's going to be an ongoing annual challenge for the CTE program. And but I do think they're up for the challenge. I can tell you, it's a very passionate coordinator that is extremely invested in that program. And I think even if, you know, as we, you know, one, whether one program survives or doesn't survive, I think, you know, they're going to continue to relook what are the best offerings to keep our kids competitive outside of just the traditional English and social studies and science and those types of things. And so, you know, it may need to evolve, but I think I think I think that's where what will end up happening is that it will evolve. I don't think it will necessarily dissipate, but it will evolve. And to meet the financial restrictions that we might have and also the constraints that we have for the number of students. And then just the last point to Scott's point, you know, we we did reach out, got student interest. You know, one of the points that was addressed with the full time position was that in previous budgets, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the previous budget, this was billed as a point four of an employee. So really, you know, carryover from one year to the next, it was really an increase of a point six, not necessarily a full increase of a point one. The challenge, you know, one of the one of the unfortunately, probably qualitative challenge discussions that we had was could we actually find somebody that would be willing to work at point four versus, you know, a full time job? We don't know that answer yet, but I think we did actually reach out to find were there people that were tentatively interested in it and did they hold the qualifications? But until somebody actually applies for the job and we find out where we are, and then also when we find out ultimately how many students actually are willing to enroll. But I think we still have some time to make some decisions around that, and I guess we'll see where that goes at this point.
Thank, thanks, Mike. You know, good, good, good words, good thoughts, and no question, this is an ongoing issue until, you know, enrollment starts to turn around, which it will. But I I think, and I didn't, I didn't explain myself very well. If you were, if you had a hundred eighty kids interested and forty of them would sign up, would those forty be additional kids coming out of study halls? Or would those forty be and may not be forty, would some of those be kids that would be saying, oh, I was going to take our X Y Z, and I'm going to drop that and I'm going to pick up this? And and is there a potential that this is going to cut the numbers in some elective that it's not going to be viable to run because of the number of enrollees? And that that's, that's, I'm looking at next year, and you're absolutely right, this is an ongoing issue. So so that that that's, that was really the crux of my question.
And and now we are looking at exactly both of those things. We're looking at how many students ultimately are interested in in taking the courses? And any student who's expressing interest now, we're looking at what electives are you coming from? Because students had already chosen their their schedules, so we have the benefit of knowing what elective are you willing to eliminate in order to take this course? And so we'll know, we'll know what what the impact is on, which is unusual. We don't normally have that. So it actually provides us with a unique opportunity to do that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike.
Scott, is Family and Consumer Science required, one of the required courses for graduation at this time?
No, it's not.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thought maybe they snuck it in on me.
No.
And could you tell me how many guidance counselors we have at the middle school and the high school?
Let's see, at the middle school, we have three guidance counselors, and at the high school, we have seven counselors.
And is there one chair for that department for both buildings or?
We have two counselors that share that share the coordinator position for the counselor.
Scott, just a point of observation from one of the final slides you you showed, the budget history over the past three years. If I if I understood correctly from that, if this budget is approved as proposed and you look at the previous two budgets, basically, the Ram budget has increased one, a net total of one percent over the course of three budget years. Is that
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's pretty impressive. So congratulations to you and your board, in my opinion.
Great, thanks.
Do we have any more questions to these folks?
My my final comment, and it's a comment, it's not a question. We we don't see you folks that often, and we don't get a chance to say thank you. I think Ram is is one of the best high schools. It is, as far as I'm concerned, best high school in the area, or best middle high school in the area. I think the administration, the staff and the board have always had the best interest of the kids upfront. And I I just, I have two kids that that graduated from Ram. They're both successful. And I think based on what we see coming out of there today and and some of the schools where you place your students, you're doing a terrific job. So, yeah, we're going through some tough times now, but I personally support everything you guys do.
And thank you. Well, thank you, Mal. Mal, I do need you to correct you on one thing. You're absolutely wrong. We are not the best high school area. We're the best high school state.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I will echo Mal's comments, subject to Scott's amendment.
Much appreciated, Mike.
Yeah, I gotta add my two cents worth on and that. I have three kids that graduated from there, two grandchildren, and everybody's every, went on to higher education and is very successful, so. And here we are still in town, supporting the school system.
And we do appreciate that, please. Hope everyone knows that.
Thank you. Thank you to the board. Thank you, Scott. Really a pleasure to work with all of you and appreciate all you're doing. Thank you, Chairman Morris, as well. Thank you.
Okay, then we as the Ram and Hebron Board of Ed have finished, I think we, the Board of, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance can move on to other items in our budget. And Donna, we should be moving on to two thousand something or another?
Right, in the budget detail section of your book, we'll start off with the two thousand series, and that's the Police Administration. And Elaine, if you want to go through that. The two thousand. We're going to be skipping over some of them because the like the fire department and some other departments will be coming in next week. So we'll just address the ones that we won't be seeing.
Take it away, Elaine.
Is everyone to Department two thousand and one in your budget books?
No. Cat man.
Come on, Diane.
I'm good.
Got it? Okay, so this is the Police Department budget. And the overall bottom line of this budget has almost a thirty eight thousand dollar decrease. This is primarily due to the State Trooper Services line. Our new resident State Trooper is a very qualified handsome young man, but he's on the lower scale of the state payroll. So we have a savings of almost forty five thousand dollars just within his salary. And then we had a sixteen thousand dollar decrease in their capital outlay. And then there's a few other places within the budget where he increased items accordingly based on twenty twenty one actuals and where the current fiscal year budget is. And we have new officers, so there's additional training that is going to be necessary for those officers, which is resulting in a five thousand dollar increase. Trooper Bryce has been performing some overtime in the absence of some other officers being on board, part time officers. So we increased the State Trooper overtime line and the vehicle maintenance in case we can't, even though we have a new cruiser for replacement in the budget in CIP. I don't know how many of you have tried to buy a new vehicle, but there's no new vehicles to be had, especially police certified vehicles. So if we can't replace one of our vehicles, we may have to equip and do some other maintenance to the older vehicles that we have in place. Any other questions?
Elaine, is the the gasoline being flat realistic?
Elaine, is the, the gasoline being flat realistic?
It is. I looked at what their expenses are currently. And, you know, based on, I take the last 12-month expenses, so it's six months from the previous year, six months from the current year. And I think we're in good shape for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that one? They're supporting documentation for their capital outlay and the trooper costs behind your budget document there for Department 2001. And then we're going to skip over 2010 because Chief Starko will be doing his presentation. And then we'll go to the Fire Marshal Budget, which is Department 2011 behind 2010. And there's really no changes there. We just went based on the actual first telephone budget and reduced that by $25. But otherwise, this budget is pretty much flat funded. Same thing with the burning official budget, that's flat funded. This is a part-time position, basically, for the burning official to hand out burning permits for residents. 2020 department will also be covered with Under Chief Starko's presentation. And the 2030 is our Emergency Management Department headed up by Paul Bancroft. And this is just a increase based on, I mean, he's had to do a lot more with some of the storm coverage and specifically with COVID. So we bumped his salary up a little bit more than just the standard 2.5% increase. And we just added a little bit more money to his telephone line. I think he upgraded his phone, so we needed a little bit of an increase there. Paul's salary is reimbursed through the emergency management grant that we get from the state too, just for point of reference. So his salary is kind of a wash for us. The next department is the Animal Control, 2040. And here, there's only a $770 increase. There's a 3% increase to the salary for the ACL. And then an increase in the heating fuel to keep it more in line with what the actual expenditures have been. Overall, it's a 2.30% increase. And that concludes the Department 2000 until Chief Starko comes to see us. If you wish to go on to Department or Departments 3000, we can do that if you so desire.
I guess we should ask the members of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance what their preference is. It's 9:15. Do they want to close up shop or do they want to continue on to the next one? Speak up, everybody.
Yeah, what is the, are we, are we ahead or behind? So if we, if we bail, are we gonna now be behind in the next meeting? And the next meeting?
I think we're on schedule now. Donna, you can answer that for me.
I would say we should go through the 3000s tonight. And I don't think it's gonna take that long because then next week, we have a pretty full schedule with the Fire Department, Public Works and Parks all coming in.
That would be a cool schedule, yes.
Right, and then also on that agenda, we're probably gonna add a discussion on the ARPA projects. So I think next week's gonna be a very.
Next week, we're all gonna wonder, yeah. Okay, so I think what will happen is if we don't do it.
No, they're not presenting unless the boards feel they need to bring them in. The only ones that are scheduled are Parks, Public Works and the Fire Department. But I, I think we could go through the 3000 and 5,000 because I think we're pretty quickly through those.
And let's go through the 3000s.
And the three, some of the 3,000.
I agree.
Yeah, some of them are contractual obligation.
So we can't, yeah, so. Next week, we'll have this up all night, so.
Okay, so Department 3003 is the AHM contribution. So this is by our commitment, which was voted on by both the Boards of Selectmen and Board of Finance. It's an increase of $74,000. And as has been previously reported, we've assumed the contribution amounts from the Board of Ed and RAM into our budget. So that's why it looks like it's a $35,000, I mean, 35% increase. It's a $74,000 increase, but this was voted on previously by both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. You do have supporting documentation for their budget.
Okay.
Trying to, I'm going through my pages just as you guys are.
So the next section would be the 3004 for the Chatham Health District.
So this is again a contractual obligation. And the increase is based on their budget necessity and recommendation. I just keep missing that page. Are there any questions on either one of those? And that brings us to the Library, Department 3007. This is a, almost a 5% increase. And this was an increase to bring all of the part-time employees into mind a with either the increase based on minimum wage or specifically for their title of an LT1 or LT2. And then building maintenance has an increase of $12,000 for some painting in the building, I believe. Memory serves me correctly. Library Materials is up about $1,800. Any questions there?
I'll just add to that, Elaine. There was a request from the library when they initially submitted their budget for the addition of Sunday hours. And that was for a total of additional funding of $23,000. And the town manager did cut that from his recommended budget. We did not feel that we were able to support that funding at this time. And the, one of the other reasons is there's a strategic plan committee right now for the library. And we felt that we should wait and see what comes out of, what recommendations come out of that strategic plan as to increased hours at the library.
Any questions? Okay, Department 3013, which is for the Senior Van. This has an increase of 41% or $24,857 primarily due to some bumps in the part-time payroll line. We tried to get the van drivers more in line of where they should be in coordination with other towns. And we also bumped up the one full-time van driver salary to also coordinate with where salary should be. Any questions there? Again, this, this budget is offset by revenue from NCAA grants. That total approximately, where's your total here? Let's see, her total here. Oh, here we go. It's a total of about $36,000 in state matching grants for the offset of this budget.
Those are the grants that the board just approved last week at your meeting.
Correct. Department 3020, which is for the Senior Center, has an increase of about 7% or $2,200. This was again primarily for the part-time payroll position. This is like a yoga and fitness person, fitness position. And this is also offset by about $3,000 in revenue. Otherwise, this budget is kind of flat funded. There is supporting documentation for this department in your books as well. And Department 3030 is for the Probate Court. This is flat funded. This is the fee that Glastonbury charges us for probate services in Hebron. Wins us to the Parks and Recreation Department Budget, which has an increase of 19%, $26,388, which is primarily due to the request for reinstatement of a part-time office position. This position was laid off during COVID along with one supervisory position in Parks and Recreation. And both Craig, Craig Bryant and the Director and Erica Santos, one of the supervisors, have been working an extreme amount of hours to fulfill the vacancies of these two positions that were not returned due to COVID.
One second. The page on the screen doesn't look like we're at the right spot.
Oh, we're at 4001 on the screen, Donna. Can you scroll down just a little bit?
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Yeah.
3102, is that where we are?
Yeah, 3102.
Thank you.
And then the last department in the series 3,000 is the Memorial Day Fund. And this is for the Memorial Parade. We increased that by $500 because at one point in time, the Legion was paying for some of the flags, but and the town was paying for some of the flags, both for the center and the cemeteries. And now the town is absorbing the cost for those flags. And that concludes the series in the 3,000s.
Elaine, I'm sorry, going back to 3102 recreational programs? Is that, did you say that's part of Parks and Rec or that's separate?
That's Parks and Recreation.
Okay, but they're, they're presenting their own budget next week?
I don't believe they are. Are they, Donna? Is Parks and Rec presenting?
Yes, they are. They'll be in the meeting next week.
They got a prelim. Now you can ask them all the questions you want next week, Mike.
There you go.
Okay, so just, just so I'm clear, on 3102 and then I guess it's Tab 4 or Fund 4 of our booklet?
Yeah, that's their special revenue fund.
Got it, okay.
From the operating budget. This is a separate revenue fund that, that is mostly for their programs and is primarily supported from their, all their offsetting revenue for the programs. I can speak more to that for you next week.
So we'll move to the 5,000 series now. So under the 5,000 series and we'll start with the debt management.
She's a slave driver.
We're almost done.
Better do it now than add it on to next week.
Oh, yeah.
So Department 5,000, 5001, 5002, 5003 and 5004 are primarily for our debt. And I moved things around within these departments. So some look like decreases, some look like increases to just tie them more specifically their project assignments for proper utilization and better tracking for myself. So there is, behind page 36 on page, page 36 is the entire debt schedule. I keep an Excel document. So all of these three departments tie to this spreadsheet. I've shared this numerous times with the Board of Finance.
Yes.
So ultimately, our debt is going up by $5,800. And that does include the new sewer upgrade, so. You can peruse that at your leisure. This also includes our computer replacement program and our Siemens lease obligation.
One quick question. Next week, will we also have a presentation from the WPCA?
They're not scheduled to present, but Kevin, Kevin Kelly will be there. So if there's anything that you would like him to cover, we could ask him to include that.
I think the Board of Finance had asked quite a while ago to ensure that there was a presentation specifically on the WPCA budget. And I think we still would want that.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Diane.
We will put something together and have Kevin present it.
Can, can one of their, can their chairman present it?
We can request that. We can, I can reach out to Clara and see if she would be able to attend.
Yeah, I support that request. I think we need to understand that. And Clara is certainly one with the broad knowledge based on her many, many years of service.
Yeah, I agree, Gail. I mean, one of the things that, that I'm interested in is are they considering putting money aside, not for this reconstruction, but for the next one? You know, I, we talked about it and don't know if it went to them. And if it did, don't know if they did anything or plan to do anything or plan not to do anything. So, I mean, that's part of.
Are you talking about the second phase of the upgrade?
No.
When you say reconstruct, I don't know what you mean by reconstruction.
I'm talking about. Talking about, I'm talking, I'm sorry, Elaine. I'm, I'm talking about when it comes time, I don't know, you must remember the discussion with, with John.
I do, and I, I did relay this to Andy.
Yeah, so I'm talking 25 years from now or whenever, you know.
Oh, okay.
Small piece of, of the.
Revenue.
Yeah, and put it into however you want to administer it. But put it aside so that when we need to do a major, major rebuild again, that people on the, on the sewer line, I'm one of them, you know, at least has put some money into it beyond what they pay in taxes. I mean, we don't have to pump out sewer septic systems. We don't have to pay for repairs. We don't have to pay for replacement of septic systems. Um, I think we should pay a piece, a larger piece than just our taxes of the replacement of the sewer system. That's.
That's a valuable discussion, maybe something that is better for off-budget. And I don't know that we want to get too involved in that kind of a discussion during a budget meeting. We can ask them to come and give a general overview of their budget.
Yeah, ma- maybe it's a follow-up meeting then. Okay.
Sounds more like a philosophical issue on how we're going to fund something in the future. Right now, I say the budget hearings are for the budget here and now.
It's fine.
Right, but it would include, in my opinion, a review of what the annual review of what the charges are going to be by the selectmen, right? I believe the selectmen is, are supposed to take a look at what's charged for all of the town services and does that include the sewer charges?
WPCA has been setting their own rates, so. Is that something that should be put on the agenda for some time to see, to determine how those are going to be figured? Very well, maybe.
Yeah, I thought that that in the, I thought the, the town charter says the selectmen are responsible for any charges.
True.
That are.
Been on charter enough to know it definitely says that.
Yeah.
So, um, right now, um, Dan's not here and Mark's not here, so.
Sorry, Gail.
But I, but I think.
We can check into that. I do believe that the, the WPCA as an authority has the, has the authority to set their own fees.
They do.
Right. That's what I was saying before, right now.
That's by the statute, but I, I think we have to have a better understanding. And I agree with, with both Donna and Gail that maybe that's a discussion for another day. But I also agree with Diane that we have to understand where the money, what money comes in now and what it's used for. And is there excess? Because if you think back, and I don't know that other than Donna and, and Elaine, I don't know that there's anybody here that was, that remembers the meeting in the Rand Middle School cafeteria when.
Oh, I remember.
When things blew up about.
Yeah.
There's no money left in that account. That was supposed to be.
That was more, that wasn't in reference though now to the, the WPCA operating budget. That was to the.
Is.
Sewer assessment fund.
Nobody has a good feel, at least I don't have a good feel as to, yes, they have the authority to do it. What is their authority and what do they do and how much? I mean, we're talking about significant dollars that flow through there. If there's 900 bucks and, and it's, uh, I forgot what it was this year, about 500 bucks.
And so they're not elected officials either. They're appointed and they're appointed by the selectmen, right? And so they should be reporting to the selectmen?
It seemed to me.
Right, they're not, they're not elected. Am I right about that?
You are correct. They are appointed.
And so there should be some sort of reporting back to the selectmen on the actions that they're taking. As far, it, my opinion, sorry to be a pain in the neck, but there's a lot of money there.
There's a lot of money going in, a lot of money going out with the repairs because they, right? The pumping stations only last so long, so, um.
I think this could needs to come back to two with the Board of Finance on if you guys want to have a seated member and the procedure that we have to follow to do that, if that's where the Board of Finance wants to go.
I, I think we need to start with information.
We never kind of finished that conversation and a decision on where the Board of Finance wanted to go with that.
No, I think to start, we, uh, I'm serving as liaison to the board as the first step.
That's correct, Mike. And so that's the step that we took that we could do immediately. And that Mike will serve as liaison and gather information, but as a liaison, he doesn't listen, so he doesn't necessarily interact. But again.
That's what I meant, because you talked about possibly yeah, requesting a seated member from the finance.
And so our part of that discussion was we think that there should be a discussion of the budgets from the board at these, at our budget meetings. And, um, I know that when that was discussed, it was, oh, of course, yes, that's important. We'll do that. So I would like to see that followed through with, and it can't be next week, maybe it can be the week after, but it is important. I understand they're, they're on authority. They're, they're named by the Board of Selectmen. Let's make sure that we close the loop on it and make sure that they're reporting back to the Board of Selectmen on what they're doing.
Before that meeting, can somebody just send us the statute number that, that they get their authority under?
I, I will do that. I will send you the statute information and reach out to Kevin Kelly and Clara and see if they could come give a budget report at either next week's meeting or the following week. And then I would say a very brief discussion about the things that you mentioned. And then I think a more in-depth discussion would be at a later time. So we could focus on that and not get distracted from the budget work that we need to do.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, Donna. It's, um, the whole, to look at the whole WPCA in total, um, it's, it, what it's doing, how it's set up, who has, um, the, the Board of Selectmen's authority over it. But it's, it's all something that needs to go on a separate agenda. It's not part of the budget process.
I agree. It's just the reason we asked for it to be, have a budget presentation.
Yes, that we absolutely, we need that budget presentation, yeah. That's going to make next week awfully long, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I think Diane mentioned it, we could do it another week also. If that's easier.
That might be better, Mike, because clearly there's a lot of questions. And so I, I couldn't see that their session going less than probably an hour. And we wanted another hour to.
Yeah, we don't want to be here at 11 or 12 o'clock, do we, Peter?
No, no, I'd be gone before then. So you can, you can stay. Come on before then.
I, I would, unless it's an inconvenience for, um, Mr. Kelly, I would propose that they put, be put on the agenda for one of the following weeks.
Is there a better, if the agenda's less crowded? I mean, or?
Next week, next week, we have the department presentations and then some more discussion if we have any, um, other general government. And then that next, that following week is the week where you, the Board of Selectmen will be final, or should be finalizing their budget. So a review on revenues and then getting into finalizing the budget.
So how would that mess, mess up things, Donna, to include WPCA as the first item that night?
I, I don't really see this, this should take. I, I, I mean, yes, Peter, I agree. It could take an hour. It could take two hours. But just to present the budget, where the money comes from, how much it is, where the money goes. I, I can't imagine that, that's going to take more than 20 minutes, 25 minutes.
And I agree with that. If we stick to their, the WPCA's budget and their revenue, but the discussion about, you know, everything else, I think that's for another time.
If we get distracted, it'll go on forever.
I think it's a separate Board of Selectmen meeting.
Or a workshop between the three in WPCA, the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen.
But this is.
I could. Yeah, I agree.
Taxpayer paid dollars for, we're currently in the budget process. So the dollars that flow through there should be discussed as part of the budget process, in my opinion. And everything else, uh, yeah, I was getting a little carried away with what I wanted to know, but everything else should really be at another time. I do agree with that, but I, I think, uh, you know, we got to get off on the right foot. And if it's part of the budget discussion, it should be part of the budget discussion, not after. I'll stop.
So do we want WPCA added on next week to go over their budget in and out? Is that the consensus?
I will check with Kevin Kelly and Clara.
Clara, yeah.
Kevin is scheduled to be here next week to do the DPW budget. So, you know, it may be better to do, you know, to have him go over both budgets in the same night if Clara is available.
Okay, let's see if Clara's available. We go from there.
Thank you.
What else?
To Department 5,005 for the sewer use fees to the town, which is flat funded. And then we're on to the insurance for Department 5010. We have an increase to the workers' comp line, but a decrease to our property liability. Any questions there?
No.
No?
None.
Department 5020 is the employee benefit line and this has an increase of $4,300. We have a huge decrease, as was discussed by the Board of Education earlier, to our medical insurance line. And we have an increase accordingly with the salary increases to the pension and the deferred comp lines. And then the retiree benefit payout, because more of our employees are becoming eligible for retirement. I bumped that increase, um, I doubled it by $5,000 to be assigned, um, committed fund balance by that amount if we don't utilize it during the fiscal year, which is a possibility.
Elaine?
Yes.
Do you remind me what the deferred comp, uh, line covers? I mean, I understand there's pension contributions, but then who gets deferred comp and what is that exactly?
So deferred comp is, um, additional retirement offering. We get the pension that the town pays solely towards the full-time staff with a 7% contribution off of the annual salaries. The deferred comp is a program that employees are allowed to con, to contribute dollars into out of their bi-weekly paychecks. And then at the end of the fiscal year, the average is usually a match from the town of whatever the employee has put in of about four and a half percent. It can be less if people only don't contribute enough. They need to contribute you at least 7% of their earnings to get four and a half percent. Or if you contribute less than that, you get 50% of your contribution. If you contribute 10%, then you get 5% match from the town. So it averages.
I'm sorry, this, that's the municipal version of a 401K or is it a 401K?
That, it's an addition to the 401K.
It's a 457. It's similar.
Correct.
It's the government municipal is a 457.
401K, okay, I got it.
Town employees can contribute to a 403B, which is the direct equivalent of a 401K as well as this 457 deferred comp.
Thank you.
Put more money aside is what it does.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, because my, my world is 401K, so I'm just thinking. Version of that was that. That was it. Thank you.
And that money is not taxable until it's taken out of the account?
Correct.
Good.
Correct.
It could be for the deferred comp. It can be, um, we have a Roth option. So some employees are paying their taxes upfront.
It's much more flexible than a 403B or in the real world 401K.
Okay.
And the rest of the Department 5,000, the 550, 550, 551, 552, et cetera. Those are the contributions from the general fund to the other funds with the first being the contribution to CIP, Capital Projects, which is a decrease of $119,000 because we're moving so many of the projects under ARPA funds. The next contribution is 5051. And I'm trying to find my page there. That is the contribution to land acquisition. At this point in time, Andy's proposed budget is $175,000 or $50,000 over the current fiscal year. The next is Department 5052. Yeah, there. Is the contribution to capital projects, um, 10,000 to 75,000. And that is an increase of $54,774. Department 5053 is the contribution to revow for 40,000 for this year or a $10,000 decrease. And that concludes Departments 5,000. I'm sure you have any questions?
What was this one? 5052? Contribution to capital projects?
5050 is CIP. I just closed my book, sorry.
Those are the, um, capital projects from the 10,000 to 75,000, the ones that are just in that under the CIP category.
Got it. Yep, that's right. Thank you.
And that's it.
So we're on schedule for next week, Donna?
We are. Yes, we are.
Well, we should congratulate ourselves. So is there anything else then to conduct tonight or can? so is there anything else then to conduct tonight or can we adjourn?
I think we're all set. We don't have any visitors left. They all um tired.
We wore them out? They're tired along with us.
I don't believe there are any public comments, so I think we're, I think we're all set unless anybody has any, any questions on anything we covered.
No questions. A motion to adjourn the Board of Finance?
And I will make the, the motion at nine fifty-two to adjourn the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Good. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night all.
Good night.